For which it stands. Under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Your motion to approve it?
To approve.
Or? Or to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion passed. Uh, brief public comment? Over here, Matt, anybody online? There's nobody here.
Nope, there's nobody connected in tonight.
Okay, we'll move on. Consideration of the consent calendar?
Move consent calendar. Support.
Move and support as soon as you approve this consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Post? Motion carries. Uh, integrated health, well, next page down. Administration's report.
All right. Good afternoon, board. Um, I have some feedback from some typos in my administration report this week. Uh, which means you guys are reading it. Very happy to hear that. So thank you. Uh, just real quick, our class comp committee is scheduled to meet and said in the report that it was going to be this week. We rescheduled it for next week, Tuesday morning. So what we're going to do is we're going to look at the class comp study. Um, talk about the results of it and see what our next steps are going to be, um, before bringing in, uh, representative from the, the company to present it to the board. Um, on March twenty-third, uh, the full MREC board met in Carroll in person for the first time, uh, in a long time, I believe, since COVID had, had taken over in-person meetings. Uh, I was unable to attend that in person, but, uh, I did watch it on Zoom or participated in Zoom. Uh, several people from our community were in attendance, including, um, our board member, Kevin Beeson. Uh, he was able to speak up. I was under the impression that this was a, we need to get together and talk about something in a hurry meeting, but it did not end up being that. It was just getting everybody back in the same room, re-acclimated. And, um, we do have, or we did have a meeting between MREC and consumers today. Uh, we have not been briefed on what exactly happened with that, but once we do get briefed on that, I will be happy to update you in closed session if that is necessary, uh, for next step in, in this lawsuit. Um, at the time, or as of today, I checked on the painting that is going on in the fourth floor. Last week, the Circuit Court was finished up, so they are now using the Circuit Court for court activities. They moved to the Rotunda. I went up there and checked that out this afternoon. It looks really, really good. They're still working on it, but, I mean, if, if you could imagine a really old pale yellow faded paint, think a, a smoker's house. And the refresh that, that this paint has on it, it looks great. It looks wonderful. I'm excited for it to be finished. They will be moving on to probate court next. Um, we have two of the higher profile, uh, positions that are open where we have received multiple applications for. We're very excited. Uh, the Veterans Director or the Veterans Affairs Director position and the payroll procurement specialist positions. Um, the veterans closed, uh, and we will be selecting people to interview for that. And the payroll procurement, we've received many applications and that will close later this week. The both, uh, have prospects that look very promising. Very excited to move forward with that next step. Um, as far as the audit, uh, on Friday, I did request, the, the, the audit was due on Friday to the state of Michigan. It was not delivered to them because, uh, we are still working on some of the field work here throughout the county. Uh, I requested a thirty-day extension for it. And yesterday I did receive notification that our thirty-day extension was approved. Uh, so our audit is now due thirty days after April third, so it will be probably, I, I assume that's going to be May second will be the day that it will be due. Uh, and I'll be communicating that with our, with our audit, um, with our audit firm. Um, for the last two weeks, I, I have been able to get out into the community for some of the community meetings. I had my first, uh, Chairman of Commerce meeting. I attended with Commissioner Bailey, um, and also our first Isco Rotary meeting. Um, one last thing that I did not have on the written report, I will be holding our, our first department heads meeting also on April seventh at two P M. Uh, just to share with the department heads, uh, some of administration's goals and some of the projects. Uh, and one of the, the, the most difficult things that, that faces, uh, our county right now, our county operations, which is recruitment and retention of employees. Uh, you know, there, there, there's more that we can do to recruit and retain our employees and we're going to come up with ideas to, to do that. So we'll be getting, we'll be getting creative. We, we plan on creating partnerships in the community. Uh, we're going to promote Grashit County, uh, as, as much as we can and collaborate with other local municipalities in order to make that, to solve that problem that we have. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? Chris?
This job.
Chris, uh, May second, the audits, we're going to be due again. Will we have, uh, treasurer will have this, company have this wrapped up by then, they think?
Uh, the company has told me that they thought it would only take two weeks to do what they needed to do. And that was on March twentieth ninth.
Okay.
Yes, when they came in, they, they got ready to work. It was, uh, no messing around. Um, they were calling me on the phone a half hour after they got here saying, we want to change this. We want to do this differently. So they, 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 they were off to the races.
Okay.
What about, um, Yonio? Now, will they have to come back in to double check it or?
Yes, they will. Yeah.
Okay.
So all throughout this process, um, Yonio and Woodhill Group do every, so they are communicating through this process. Uh, so the, the, the flow of work is hitting both Woodhill, Grashit and our audit firm at the same time.
Oh, that's great.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Uh, Commissioner Committee reports, Dave?
Uh, actually, I only had one. It was at the Riverdale Tavern. This farm took a good place to add one, but.
Five legs or a bitch or what?
That way the sloppy joes, that was a special. And they, uh, uh, was farm, was the Farm Bureau in their, uh, they had a whole bunch of legislative stuff they wanted to do. But most of that's, but might be agreed.
Yeah. And?
Um, yes, I had two meetings, one with Alma City and, uh, it did, it was just kind of a regular meeting. They went into a closed session and at that point I left and didn't bother to go back. Um, also, I would, they did too. I'm sorry. Uh, they had a gentleman there from Alma who wants to put in a bike trail at one of the parks. And, um, told all about, about with what kind of group they want to do and probably want to do it and everything. And, uh, they had a lot of interest in it. And I also told him I just bought a bike, so I'd be interested in, in riding the bike through his parks and stuff like that. So, I mean, it's on the very ground floor. There's still a lot they have to work on to get it taken care of. And he figured the way they wanted to do it would be right around seven thousand dollars. Uh, and that's not putting in, uh, payments, kind of like putting in a dirt play, he said. So I think that's really nice and real exciting. Um, also I had a meeting with MSU Extension in Ionia and, um, and before COVID nineteen, there used to be, used to be a lot of people, like somewhere between twenty-five and thirty people that used to come to our meetings. And first we've lost all of them because it's actually been three years I said, I, since we've met. We were meeting on Zoom there during the COVID nineteen, but now we need to get this back together, pull everybody back in. And so one of the things that they had before was there would be a commissioner from each one of the counties. And then there would be two people besides that. And I'm not sure. I don't remember now. Um, who was the two other people that were there of, from Grashit County? And the meeting does move around and it's four times a year. So like the next meeting will be in Lansing. And, um, and it's real interesting because as we start moving around for the different counties, usually like we're going to be at one of the fairs where we can go in and, and, uh, and kind of be observing of some of the things, new things that they're doing. So right now I have one person outside that I've got to ask if they'd be interested, and I'm pretty sure they're going to be. But I also wanted to ask, is there another commissioner on the board or administrator that would be interested in, in getting them out in, uh, the meetings? And again, it's going to be moving around. Um, there's four a year, and so every other year they'll be meeting in Grashit County. And, uh, it's usually, I'm trying to think of Maccom County, Clinton County, Lansing, Grashit, Ionia, and I can't think of the other one. I think there's six of us.
Has it been with Bill Hendren on this?
He's the one that asked me to do this. Yeah, he's asked me to, yeah, we just had a meeting in Ionia. Actually, I had a meeting at Ionia at one of the really old, one of the old, old buildings in Ionia. Uh, and it was kind of neat to go through there because it was, I don't know, there are still offices in there, but it's part of the courts. But no, that was one of the things that he asked each one of us if we would, um, I would their name and phone number. I would give it to him and then he will call that person and, uh, get them on the schedule and stuff. But I wanted to ask him, just in case there was somebody else on the board here might be interested in attending the meeting. Um, and they're usually from four to five. Um, and it's usually on a Wednesday. Was it a Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday night? Can't remember now. Um, so anyway, if there is, just contact me and I will, I will send it on to him. And if not, I'm going to look for the second or the third person.
All right, Dave's. Richard?
Um, yeah, I, I attended, uh, Hamilton and North Star Township. Meeting. Uh, everyone I attended this time around were finishing up their budgets. Uh, because their fiscal years obviously comes first of July, so they're, they're on a completely different calendar than we are. Uh, and then I went to, um, Lafayette and Wheeler. And that same thing there, they were working on their budgets. Um, so there wasn't really anything, you know, new that they were having there. And then I went to Brick and Ridge. And they were doing the same thing. They're all on the same fiscal year, so that this budget time this time around. And then, uh, their fire board met. Um, and they're doing okay. They're looking at the future, wanting to build a new fire hall, Brick and Ridge. Uh, so that's basically what's going on.
Hey.
Yeah.
Well, I went to the Health Department meeting with George. I'm, uh, I'm not very, so I, or I, I don't contribute much because I, I don't know.
It's going to take some time, Tim. Take like time like everything else. It takes time to learn. There's a lot of things going on.
Oh.
Don't worry about it. You'll get it.
Well, I don't know. There's, there's of course a lot of money. Flourishly sometimes. I, I, I know health isn't very important, but.
Ducked me getting the flu shot when I was over there. Last time I was, here you might as well get one. Well, okay, yes.
Did you get one?
They were, they were, the last time I was, I mean, running around with needles sticking everywhere.
I got that myself. That's a good one to have.
Okay, chicken parts, one is low.
Well, myself, I met with Perryton last night and, um, the village of Perryton, they're, um, getting some of their stuff done for their water treatment plant, uh, still under their A R P funds or they're going to rebid. I think these prices of these meters or something that the A R P funds bought from middle high. You know, they found another company and it's going to be bid on both lists. Um, they got some tennis balls, ports or something, you know, fixing up and, and they just got the product in, I guess, and concerned about how they're going to lift them up and put them in. And, um, then it was just some discussion about, um, they had, they had approved everything to join the, uh, light order that's programmed that the county has. They had not heard anything back and Chris was getting escorted away today for them. So, but that's about it there. Um, any consideration of new business? Reintroduction. You what?
Reintroduction number one.
Okay, I'm getting, that's the next one.
All right.
Okay. Uh, reintroduction of the Deputy County Administrator, Sheila Barnaby.
Yes.
Sure. Um, we know that you know Sheila Barnaby. You've been introduced to her before. Um, but over the last two years, um, there's been a lot of growth and there's been a lot of, of things that she has accomplished and a lot of things that she wasn't able to share with you before. And we thought this would be the perfect time for her to come up and, and let you know what she is going to bring to the county, what she does bring to the county as the county's newest, uh, Deputy County Administrator. So Sheila, I'll let you go ahead.
Right. Thank you. Um, I basically would like to take the opportunity to reintroduce myself. Um, I know that when I first got hired in, it was a quick introduction, um, by Tracy at that point, but I wasn't really able to express who I am, um, what my beliefs are and why I'm here. So that's what I'm here for today. Um, I do have two degrees, um, from Davenport University. I have a business management degree as well as my human resource, um, degree. I have worked in human resources for about ten years now. That was in the manufacturing, um, industry, nonprofit world, the medical history, uh, the medical field, and I've been here for about two and a half years now. Prior to working in H R, I worked at Michigan Works for six years. So while that's not H R specific, I was, um, talking to employers to find out what they needed and I was talking to employees to find out what they were looking for and then matching those, those, um, up. I, I have also worked in business management for ten years and in customer service as well. Outside of my professional career, um, I have made and take the opportunity to share my skills to, with underserved and vulnerable populations in our community. Um, I, about nine years ago, I created the Grashit County Foster Closet in my home. Um, that started out with, in just a little closet and turned into a self-sustaining organization that I just passed over to Child Advocacy in July. Uh, and we helped over, we've helped thousands of kids during that time. And I'm very proud of that and what I've done. I take every opportunity I can to find passionate volunteer opportunities currently. I am the Secretary for the Habitat of Humanity, Habitat for Humanity of Grashit and Clayton Counties. I am a member of the Sex Education Advisory Board for Alma Public Schools. I am a part of the Grashit County Breastfeeding Coalition, a member of the Optimist Club of Grashit County. I'm on the Planning Committee for the Arts United, which is through United Way, as well as the Child Abuse and Neglect Council. In the last five years, I am honored to have been awarded, um, the following awards. I was the Child Advocate of the Year. I was given the Gleaner Outstanding Volunteer Service Member Award. I was given the Hammer Award, which was proven, presented for community impact. I was also an Optimist Community Award winner. In my free time, I am a birth doula. I don't have a lot of it, but when I do, I am a birth doula. Um, and that allows me to provide emotional support to parents that, uh, in Grashit County and surrounding areas that might not have other resources available or support systems. And, and I feel quite passionate about being able to do that. This last June, I successfully completed my SHRM certification. Um, it took me fourteen months of, um, of learning, um, and to, to take that, that test in order to even be told that you can take this, the certification, you have to show that you are an H R professional and you have to be able to prove that. In any given year, the pass percentage is only about sixty-five percent of people that take that. And only about fifteen percent of H R professionals in the United States have that certification. So I'm extremely proud to be able to say that I have it. I think that it's representative of me and the skills that I have. But it's also great for Grashit County to be able to say that they have a SHRM certified person on staff. Um, it says that I have a certified knowledge of the principles that are needed to do H R. I'm at Grashit County because I have a passion for my work and I do feel a duty to serve the people of Grashit County. This has been my home for the last twenty years and I'm excited to gra, to raise my children in Grashit County. My goal is to create a safe, healthy and equitable place for all employees to work at. Um, the people that are here now and the people that choose to come work with us in the future. I made a conscious decision during the interviews for the administrator that when, if Chris were to be chosen, I was going to stand under his leadership. I believe in Chris. I stand beside Chris and I am excited for the partnership that Chris and I will be able to be moving forward and what we will be able to do for the county. Um, in my time here, I have built strong relationships with department heads and elected officials. I believe that I've proven to the staff that I am trustworthy and fair. I provide support in a listening ear, ear while maintaining a high level of professionalism. My life motto is mean what you say, say what you mean and never say it mean. And I bring that with me into this job and every other thing that I do. Um, so to you commissioners, I offer you my knowledge and my vast experience in my chosen career, my passion for our community and my drive to make this organization a great place for all to work. Um, I want you all to know my doors open. I will answer any questions that you have. Please come to me. Let me help you if you have any questions or if you have any concerns.
Thank you. Any questions, Rashia?
Yes, any questions?
I had one, but you went so quick, I forgot what I was.
Sorry.
Oh, um, I was, I was going to ask you what Matt.
A birth doula?
Yeah, what is?
Yeah. So it's basically providing emotional support to somebody while they're in labor. So it's.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
While they're in labor. So it's kind of like the, um, I don't do anything medical. It is all preparing the person before birth, making them know what's, what may happen and being an advocate for them during labor.
And this is a single person? Like, I mean, like a mother without a husband or?
Could be.
Or, okay. And do you run to the hospital or?
So I could do a home birth. I can do a standalone birth center or in the hospital.
And deliver the babies too.
I don't do anything medical. I am there during births.
Okay.
You're the one that says push.
I'm the one that says you can push. I'm the little fairy on their shoulders that's supporting them and encouraging them.
Snap you.
You, oh, oh, no.
You have children?
I do. I've adopted two children. Mm-hmm.
They just got cute little boys.
I do. Yeah. I adopted them out of foster care. So, um, they think of this building as an amazing place because it was a really positive place for our family. Um, and I'm honored to work here.
So you're second-in-command Deputy Town Minister?
Mm-hmm.
But we, of the human resource that you were, we don't.
I still am.
Oh, you cover both.
Mm-hmm. So there will be somebody that's going to come in and do payroll and procurement. But other than that, any personnel-related things will still go with, go through me.
So are you going to hire someone to do, uh?
Payroll. Yep, it's posted. Chris mentioned that in his administrator's report.
And procure.
Like contract.
Been open for a while, hasn't it?
Um, seven days, yeah.
Well, it's been open.
Well, the procurement piece was before, yes.
Now we've combined.
But now it's a new position.
You know, we, and still haven't hired anybody from the outside yet. So my statement of waiting three months, it's still. But we're kind of working our way.
Well, this job, this job was posted externally, so people could have applied for this deputy position and nobody did.
Well, I, I think you're probably the most qualified.
Thank you.
In the house.
I just want to say that Sheila brings a level of professionalism to that administration, to H R. Uh, i- is beyond anything that I, I could have imagined that we would have been at when I first started working here. So I want to say thank you.
Yeah. All right. Well, y'all have my number, so if you need me, please reach out.
Good job.
Please.
All right. Thank you. My next lady in general, we have an appointment, a non-attorney magistrate to the sixty-five A District Court, uh, Charlie Perkins. Uh, it looks like it's all been approved here pretty much from the judges and stuff.
Except for our board has to approve it too. So.
You look at it in the brochure, it looks like they've all signed it and everything. So we just have to approve this. This is a shared position with both of us.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve. Charles. Okay, thank you.
Motion made and seconded by, um,
Dave.
Written Dave by to approve Charles Perkins as the non-attorney magistrate for the District Court. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passed. All right, up to Chair.
No word on that missing guy yet, eh? Yeah, I'll get into that in a minute here. So, um, so you have in front of you your, um, annual report from twenty twenty-two. Um, you'll note on inside the, the, uh, report here that do a computer software change over some man-hours, miscellaneous numbers are unavailable. We have that corrected now, so it will be correct for the twenty twenty-three, uh, report for you. We had to do when we switched to, um, a different reporting system, um, through Caliber. And, uh, we've gone back to, uh, our main one, which is Core, and we're going to stay with them and we've got it corrected. Little bit more work for the deputies, but, uh, not a lot more and, um, they haven't complained about it. Um, so that's a good thing. Um, I would say though, if I was guess, going to guess that our, or that our stuff that is not highlighted here would be fairly on par course with last year, although our arrests were up for a hundred, so we could have been up a little bit more. I think that's coming out of COVID now. That's why you'll see arrests were up four hundred and sixty-four from the previous year. Um, jail is accepting, uh, people into the jail now and, uh, um, things that were COVID-related are now catching up with people that didn't go to court and stuff like that. The judges are issuing bench warrants more and accepting them and, um, so. But if anybody has any questions about this, I'd be more than happy to try to figure them out for you. Um, the report in the back shows, uh, our yearly stats and, um, I've looked them over and, um, crime really takes no break. Wish it did, but it doesn't. So.
I thought it did in real cold weather with crime well, right?
Not, not this winter. Um, we've had a busy, busy, uh, three months so far. We are, uh, averaging about four hundred and twenty complaints a month, which is
Fifteen.
Fifteen a day roughly. It's a lot for, um, county this size. But, uh, we're getting by.
Mike, I'd like to make a statement.
Sure.
Don't take this wrong. I really enjoy reading these.
Yep.
I always give them to my, my district or my, yeah, my district, but I really enjoy the pictures. I think.
Yeah, we decided to put some pictures in there this year.
Over the top.
Yeah, um, something more to, to go with it. Um, yeah, we decided to do the pictures and some of the things we do, the trick-or-treating with the kids. Uh, a young man donated, uh, some cookies to us, uh, adopt a highway out on the highway. Um, graduation from the Corrections Academy, of course, your corrections, or your court office people. Uh, the check that we donated last year to, um, for our beard, uh, growing of our beards that we donated, uh, to, uh, some tornado victims in Kentucky. Um, so that's the check presentation there. So, yeah, we thought we'd do that and just change a little bit of things. And the one with the patrol car and the Christmas lights downtown, and then the one, the very front with the sun in the background, we thought were really unique pictures with the windmills in the background. And so we decided to incorporate them into the book this year.
She got the dog of hand.
Well.
Like that where the, you're swearing in the dog.
Yeah, yeah.
That dog was so intent, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was.
The only thing I'd like to add to it for next year is we got some room. The only thing I'd add to it for next year is we got some room. Put down the names, who they are.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, I know some of them and some of them I don't know.
So this one on the bottom, the left of the dog there, that was a blessing of the tractors last year. And we just did that again this year. We had guys go down to Pompeii for blessing of the farming community.
Anyway, this was I the dog, all of it was just, I've been, I can't tell you how many times I've looked through there at him. But I thought that really put it over the top. You've done a great job and I it sounds, I mean, I don't want to see crime and I don't think that's I don't enjoy looking at all the statistics as they're higher or lower or whatever. Hopefully they're lower. But what I meant is that you put out a good report and every one of my guests at Bethany Saint Louis and I'll be doing Elma this year. They they really say thank you. They really appreciate me giving them your report. Sam, you'll really like your pictures too.
Thank you. So with that being said, I've discussed this with Chris at length. I've had several meetings with Chris since he took over already. The court bailiffs out here, in my opinion, do a tremendous job for our courthouse. Just about every court now is running on a daily basis, got something going on other than when we're painting, obviously, but I just wanted to share a statistic with you from January to currently, what they've done here at the door. They keep track of weapons and or mace that come in through this security screening. In January of this year, forty two items were either seized or made return to their car. February forty seven. March sixty two, because they keep a tally for them. And they give me a little sheet of paper that has how many they took down every day. That's a hundred and fifty some items they've either kept out of this building or returned, had returned to a car or they've seized. Pretty good job by them screening at the door here.
Starting at two, two hundred what?
Hundred and fifty some items since January. So three months.
Oh, three months.
Mm hmm. So with that being said, I am anticipating a staffing shortage right directly here. Cole Swan is retiring on Thursday. I'm losing one deputy to Isabella County at the end of the month. He's been hired up there. And I will, if anybody wants to talk to me about it after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk to people when I want to about it. But I'm anticipating some other staffing leaving between now and July first. And in that case, Deputy Freed, who sits out here at the security desk full time, is going to be going back out on the road. Which means I have to hire another part time security officer to cover the amount of hours that's needed in the court. So what I'm asking is, is that our court officers are paid one pay rate, whether you've been here 10 years or they've been here one minute. And I'd like to put them on the Police Officers Association of Michigan contract scale based on years of service to reward the guys that have been here for quite a while for their years of service. And with Scott going back out on the road and hiring a new part time person in June, I think it will be essentially a wash for what he is paid to work the courthouse, to what I would make up in putting them on the Police Officer Association Michigan pay scale. And Chris and I talked about it today and he said, if you can make that work, present it tonight, and I think I can make that work. So I just think I if I lose bailiffs, then I can't move Scott out of here and then that's gonna hurt us out on the road. If I do lose personnel between now and July first. So Scott's aware of it and he he accepts it because he's he's a team player. So.
May I ask a couple quick?
Absolutely.
Easy questions to clarify what you said. The P O A M scale, that has five different steps on it.
Has a beginning wage, then year two, year three, year four and year five. So actually, the beginning of your fifth year, you're topped out.
So you would, it would be on the same scale as a?
Correct. So that's correct. So anybody that's hired today as a bailiff in the courthouse, whether they're brand new out of the academy or somebody that has got experience would start at the bottom. And they would have an anniversary date. And then anybody that's been here for two years would be in step three. Anybody that's been here for three years would be in step four. Anybody that'd be here five years would be in step five. Anybody above that would just automatically go up. And I sent a thing to Chris and it would be about between now and October first, about forty three hundred dollars. And I think I can save that with Scott going back out on the road in his salary.
Are you proposing the bailiffs would be just on step one and step two? Or they would be?
I would do it on their, how many years they have with me. So like Charles Janeski has a total of eight years, so he would be at the top. Marty Schuler has is in his third, third year, so he'd be at step four. John Terry has been here about three years, he'd be at step four. Anybody that's been hired, like Dennis Guthrie, works the security desk, he's at starting. And the person that I would hire in June would be at starting.
So when you said they go up, when you get to step five, you've been here 15 years, you're at step five.
You you're that you're maxed out. I just wanted to make you aware of that. I believe I have it with, I've been crunching some numbers in the last few days. And like I said, with Scott anticipating him going back out on the road, what we're gonna save with him leaving the courthouse and hiring a new part time, help cover them hours is gonna cover that forty three hundred.
So I'll make a motion.
If he doesn't go on the road, I mean, if it doesn't work out that way.
Well, I'm losing two for sure. And I've already got him on the shift bid sheet coming up for the road patrol. So he he is gonna come out of there one way or the other, whether I have to cut down on the courthouse or not, because I'm gonna need him out on the road.
How many deputies do you have out on the road?
And I'm fully staffed. I have twenty plus one on the drug team. If I go down below sixteen, then I'm gonna have to make some creativity with my schedule and probably drop the person on the drug team. To help, you know, we gotta do what we gotta do here to police things in the community and but like I said, Dave, if you want to talk after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to tell you what my anticipation is for how many vacancies we might have by July first. And anybody else?
So when you go to rehire, you put an ad out hoping that maybe somebody that's retired maybe will come back or stay?
For the for the courthouse? Yes, yes.
So you'd like to do is put the bailiffs on the same schedule as the road patrol?
That's correct.
While we, but we would still have authorization to fill Scott's position.
Yes, with somebody part time. I will not bring back full time for the courthouse.
For this year, we would have savings, but potentially if we, in future years, that savings.
It could as they go up the scale, but as most of you see, most of these officers are retired officers that are working in the courthouse. And they're not gonna work forever. So then you've got to search out. And it's very hard for road patrol in the last three months. I've got one application. One.
So their hourly rate would go up to?
Hourly rate would go up, yes.
And and they would get this, their hourly rate. Can you just give me an idea where they're at or what they're being?
So right now, the deputies out here at the security desk are at twenty two something and tops is twenty six.
So how do you get the tops if it's all flat rate?
That's what I'm asking, to go on a scale where they get paid based on their years of being here.
They're at twenty two now. So the first, it's the first scale of P O A M or?
Well, the the Charles has like eight years of experience here, so he would go to the twenty six. I think they're twenty two ninety one and go to twenty six ninety one, something like that. Don't go me on it. Then anybody below that would go to whatever they slot in for years of service. So Marty and John are not as high as Charles because he's been here longer.
That's the one that's out there right now?
That's Scott Freed. He's the one that's gonna be going back to the road.
We're gonna miss him.
Yeah, I know. He's been over here quite some time before I even took over a sheriff, but I have to watch out for the people in the public.
Yeah, I understand. I'll make a motion that we
Can I read the motion?
Yeah, would you please?
Okay, to approve the security bailiffs to be at the police officer pay scale with a beginning wage and step up over five years effective April four.
No, I want to effective May first or the first pay period in May, sorry.
This is an increase of forty three hundred for a year.
Approximately, I approximated it.
And we're but we're making up through shifting a deputy back to road patrol. That's sounds okay?
Okay, that's what he's asking for, yes.
And I ran it by Chris and he said, yes, it sounds like if you've done the math, that it would be pretty near a wash.
For this year.
What happens next year? Well, we're gonna be negotiating.
Next year will be a budgeted item.
Yeah, that's correct. You're exactly right.
It's different this year. Next year will be a budgeted item. So, yeah, it'll be baked in the budget.
The motion on the floor is your second?
Yes, for.
All right, Dave, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? And carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Richard, do you have something? Okay, it's like we need some appointments on the Grasset Integrated Health Board for three years. Do these all?
Yeah, so, well, for integrated health, yeah, you can do it all at once. I didn't, I did advertise in the paper. I did not receive any extra applications other than the people who are already on the board and they still want us.
Got these four here?
Yes.
So it looks like we'll be reappointing your Mrs. Lee, I'm sure she was ever, gentlemen, C. Thalen, A. Olivera, Joe Barton and Jay Merchant.
I'd make a motion that we do that.
The motion remains?
For.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, those gentlemen, those folk. The other one is consideration to appoint Chris Ostenhoff to the Central Dispatch Authority Board and Hospital Finance Board. These are places that Tracy filled in her slot in, she sat on, and the Greater Grasset Development. They turn it in in nine thirty twenty twenty three.
Don't move.
Your sport?
Sport.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, she carries. Any unfinished business? A public comment, there's no public here. You got anybody online, man?
Hope nobody's connected in right now.
All right. We have consideration going into closed session for regarding the purchase or lease of real property. Need a motion for that?
Move.
We moved the sport to begin closed sessions, parts and property issues. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need a roll.
Yes.
Local.
Did you need a roll?
I got it. Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
It is.
Okay, we're closed session. Can you shut that off, man, or whatever you do?
Yep. Do you anticipate doing any additional business after you come back out?
No.
Okay, I'll go ahead and disconnect it.
All right. Thank you.